Hello, everyone.
Hello, hello, hello.
Everybody's got a vote.
Playing the part of John Fletcher.
Yes. Present. I'm so excited. Must be here. Let's roll.
You can't vote present.
Go Titans.
You ready, Pat?
Maybe. I don't know, am I?
It's rolling right now, so you get to go watch yourself later.
Not gonna do it.
All right, six P M. We'll call this village board meeting in order if you'd all please join me in a moment of silence. A pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, do you have a role?
Trusty Nice.
Present.
Trusty Try. Trusty Ferguson.
Present.
Trusty Charo.
Present.
Trusty Gerger. Trusty Fletcher. Village President Kimzy.
Present.
Any public announcements this evening?
Just the Chatham B F W is having a karaoke night this Friday night. That vote starts at eight P M.
For everybody's benefit, I won't go. Public comments on agenda topics.
I do want you to know as Les comes to be, are you gonna be singing that night? Are you doing karaoke?
I don't think so.
He's doing a solo. Solo we can't hear.
No old business, item one under new business is an ordinance adopting employee manual for the village of Chatham, which was revised January of twenty twenty-three. They've motioned to bring this to the floor.
I'll make that motion.
Trusty Charo's made a motion.
I'll second.
Second, my trustee first. In fact, you wanna explain the change?
Yeah, we, with our new pay comm system, it allows for time to be used in fifteen-minute increments. And in our old system, everything was an hour. So the staff has asked if we could adjust that accordingly, and I see no reason why not to, so. That's the only thing that changed in there for vacation time, personal time, sick time, and I think comp time. You can use fifteen-minute increments of those.
Questions, discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Posed? So moved. Have a motion to bring the consent agenda to the table.
Make a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Trusty Ferguson's made a motion, second by?
Trusty Nice.
Trusty Nice. Discussion regarding the warrants or the minutes. Hearing none, Mr. Clerk, would you take the role?
Trusty Nice.
Present. Yes.
Trusty Nice, trusty Ferguson.
Absolutely.
Trusty Charo.
Yes.
Village President Kimzy.
Yes. All right, no reason for closed session. Next scheduled meeting of the board is six P M. On the twenty-fourth. Jim? Public comments regarding all village business, would you like to?
Yep, we'll get it out of the way then.
There we go.
Okay. So had a good meeting this morning. So one thing that Dustin wanted to kick off this year was on every Tuesday morning, meet with the village and chair with the village staff and review, look at projects, status of projects, planning projects coming up. So we're kicking that off this year. We had our first meeting this morning. Two hour long meeting, went through a whole bunch of items, and we'll be continuing that activity as we move forward, looking at everything from policies to projects to status of projects, so or implementation of, you know, different ideas or concepts with village crews, whether it be the sewer department, water department, the street department, liquor department. So just kind of a, kind of an open house type forum in which we look at these items and make sure that everyone's on the same page. So we'll be having those every Tuesday before this meeting. And then that way we can give a much more comprehensive report to you guys here tonight. So first meeting, lot to cover. And we looked at a bunch of different projects. One was to get some things on M F T. One of the concerns that the village had, uh, street department was we have shoulder washout on West Walnut. They want that taken care of, so it's curb work and driveway work associated with that that will get going on the M F T project. Uh, we had the sewer collapse on Ben's Drive, process of reviewing the video that was taken by Peter's Park Plumbing Heating. We're gonna put out a contract to fix the sinkhole that's right adjacent to two persons garage in the house. And get that repaired, and then we'll look at, um, project cost to do pipeline lining because a lot of it's old clay tile that's cracked. And looking at doing a line project similar what we did down at Palmer Boulevard a few years back.
Where they push a balloon inside of it.
So it's, yeah, it's a, um, a balloon that's covered in epoxy. So basically what you're doing is pulling a balloon through that's spreading epoxy through there, and then that epoxy coating is as strong as a new pipe inside of the old pipe. So the strength components of that is like pouring into my inside pipe. So we're not digging through everyone's backyards to repair that, plus it's an extremely deep sewer, it's like eight and a half feet deep. So the size of the hole through those smaller backyards would just be devastating, plus all the utilities and everything else. So we're gonna look at that, work with Pat in terms of funding available to make those repairs and prioritize that.
Question for that, how thick is that? I mean, if you put that inside the existing pipe, how, how thick is the new pipe? Because they'll cut down on how much can be transported through those pipes, right?
Okay, so how that works is the new pipe is plastic, and the flow characteristics of the plastic is much better than the material that's in there. So even though you're decreasing the size of that pipe, the roughness of the new pipe is much smoother, so you're able to maintain the same flow capacity as the old pipe with the new pipe. But the thickness you're only looking at, you know, quarter inch.
Okay.
Is about what you're looking at for thickness. So there's not a significant reduction in the size or the diameter, inside diameter of flow capacity of the pipe.
Okay, that was my big concern.
And the other one too is that storm sewer is really deep, so you can develop some pressure head on and push flow through there, so it's not in danger of burping out into the streets or other communities' yards.
Okay, perfect.
Let's see, concern about walnut and shoulders. We're kind of losing the edge of pavement on walnut right there in front of the water tower. So we're gonna look at, you know, possibility of cost of shoulders and also look at the profile grade on that, on that roadway because if we ever go with a three-lane urban section, you have to have enough fall to accommodate current gutter on the outside. So the minimum thing you wanna go is point three percent rate or point oh oh three feet per feet drop. Otherwise the gutters won't flow and the water will just go to the gutters and just sit at the edge of pavement. So before we accommodate that, if we're looking at shoulders, we wanna make that fold that pavement so it would accommodate a future three-lane section. And then that way we're not putting in temporary pavement to rip it out later to do a three-lane section in the future that whatever we put in, we can use in the future. One thing that we did look at is supporting lots, layouts at, um, South Park and.
Nice.
So in combination with the street department and the parks department, uh, looked at providing a little bit more efficient parking within the existing facilities, uh, at South Park, you know, for the pickleball and for the football and soccer field usage. So we got a couple of layouts there that's, um, working with the street department, parks department in terms of having them do the work. They're gonna put it in as rock first, and then the next time we do, um, oil and chip over the entire parking lot, then we'll seal the whole thing in. But with the modifications at the south parking lot and then the one by the pickleball court. This side you guys can look at whenever you want, pickleball court on the other side, uh, gain about a hundred stalls. That's a lot with minimal amount of additional paving. So. Uh, let's see, pond project, uh, working with Pat on that. There's some talk about expansion of buildings at the electric garage and reconfiguration of some of the facilities out there. So we're coordinating the pond project with that. Also looking at that major project coming up on a letting here in the spring to facilitate the need for someone else to mop the dirt that we're trying to get rid of. So that's moving forward as well. Pulling together contract documents for the demo plan, the buildings on the west side of the square. As Pat indicated this morning, we're probably looking at about thirty days out to get funding on that.
It's what it seemed to be. I got the guy from the county or from the state and said.
So we'll pull together bidding, uh, documents to correspond with that. So as soon as we get the funding, we'll put that project out on the street and move forward with that. Do have some funds available for bike path improvements. And through the annual park, thirty thousand dollars here for the park improvements. One of those, uh, would be as part of the parking lot improvement on this concept. To push the parking out into this area, we'd look at relocating the bike path further around the square and add up. So to gain some additional old parking stalls up in this area. So we would use some of those funds to relocate the bike path around the edge of the parking lot, square that up for more efficient economical parking at that location. Plus that bike path in that location is not in the best shape, so it's, uh, not really throwing away anything that was good to begin with. Uh, what else we got? So the next month's meeting for February, what we're gonna hone in on is looking at finances for M F T. Looking at what our current project commitments are, looking at next year's commitments, uh, looking at the funding that's at your M F T account over the past year. Project that forward, we'll line out some projects moving forward for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four year. So any questions?
Hats off to the meeting on Tuesday mornings. That's a great idea.
Yeah, uh, we got a lot of great feedback. You know, that was Dustin's idea, and, uh, you know, I think it's worked out really well with him taking over for the street department and transitioning.
Right.
And, uh, you know, it's gonna allow for, you know, the street foreman to report in what have they completed over the last month? You know, what assistance they need moving forward, you know, whether it's equipment, engineering, uh, that kind of stuff. One other thing that we talked about too was, um, concern with the street department relative to sidewalk and driveway aprons for new homes. There has been some complaints where new homes built and the driveway will sink in the apron that's in the village's right way. And how do we provide some control on that? So we're gonna look up some ordinances that other municipalities use, uh, in terms of trying to monitor that or have some sort of inspection program. But what we feel in my experience with other municipalities is tie that in with the building permit. So as the home building inspection process is going on, that we have a step that says, okay, frame up the sidewalk, frame up the driveway, make sure the subgrade is compacted before that gets bored, make sure the thicknesses are met and so forth. So try and eliminate those settlements and cracks and defects later or sidewalk that's bored not per eighty-eight requirements and so forth. But so, you know, working with the, um, building department to, you know, maybe incorporate that under their umbrella as far as the overall building inspection.
Thanks, Jim. Any additional public comment? Anything else I can delay this meeting for a minute and a half?
I feel like it's Groundhog's Day. We, we always talk about how we change the time of this. We need to.
Maybe my new attorney will.
Yeah. We always talk about how we don't put a time on it.
Yes, so it's set currently that the committee is fifteen, and our question is, can we do it at six oh five or thereafter? Because right now it says six fifteen and thereafter.
Okay, how do we do that? How do we change that? We have this conversation every month.
We can vote for the warrants, each one individually.
We already voted for all of them.
It takes like an hour to.
No, we're, no, no, we're, we're needing to change to six fifteen.
Yeah.
We need to move to six fifteen, either not assign a six fifteen, or maybe in the whole.
Have to give a time.
Or we need to make it.
An earlier.
Yeah, we, it's Groundhog's Day every, every month.
We can have that.
Okay.
On the agenda.
It's not always, I mean, sometimes we have really long meetings.
But yeah, can, do we need to make a motion for that or?
No, she's got.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, then.
One minute.
It's never less than a minute, it's like thirty seconds. Oh, we're here.
Yep.
All right, can I have a motion adjourned?
Make the motion.
Make the motion.
Trusty Ferguson's made a motion, second by trusty Nice, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, posed. Board meeting is adjourned. Right on time.
Six fifteen, let's call the committee a poll to work. Uh, can I have a roll?
Trusty Nice.
Present.
Trusty Ferguson.
Present.
Trusty Try. Trusty Charo.
Present.
Trusty Fletcher. Trusty Gerger. Village President Kimzy.
Present.
All right, are there any public comments on agenda topics? Hearing none, let's move to the consent agenda. Need to approve the minutes from the December thirteenth meeting.
I can get a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by trusty Ferguson, trusty Try.
Whatever you wanna call me.
Nice. Trusty Try's not here, but yeah, okay. Seconded. And there is no old business, so.
Voice vote?
Voice vote.
Aye.
Aye.
You have to hold that and.
Yeah. Because you only have three people.
Okay.
I'll take it back. I'll hold my aye.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll carry that to the next meeting then. Perfect.
We had the C M T engineering update. We have a village manager update, I hear.
You do?
About the proposed appropriation amendment.
Village junior's back. Is there more?
He forgot his phone.
Forgot his hat.
Yeah, you guys don't want this, guarantee you that.
You may not either. That's where's why you left it.
Village manager update. We have the appropriation amendment, uh, draft in front of you all, you all. We've done this every year for as long as I can imagine, and they're usually all two pages long. You look at each of the different departments, you can see the item that we spent a little more or needed to spend a little more. Uh, this year, it seems like the general insurance expenses went up over what our estimate was. So we're borrowing or moving some money from other funds to be able to cover up, cover that. Most of the time we move it from salaries because we overestimate, uh, on the salaries, how much overtime people are gonna be getting and stuff. We don't have a lot of years where we have water main breaks and street repairs and snow plowing. We end up with extra money in there and we can use it to adjust those, those things off. Feel free to take a look at them. There's nothing too exotic or they're just items that I always, I guess I'm always amazed every year how close we come to being able to get all these right. When you don't really know what you're gonna face exactly all the way through the whole year. But we're not off by much. But we will have an ordinance for you guys to approve these at the next meeting in January. And if you have any questions on any of them, feel free to ask. Or ask Dustin. Some of them are his.
Were you around last year?
Yes.
So you remember, okay, so this is the first of two.
I wasn't around for the first one. I was around for the second one. I, this is not foreign to me.
This first one is, we try to move stuff like within the general fund in the certain, the same type of line items and stuff. Yeah. The one in April, we can move a little more freely from this to that. But usually if we do this, there's little to move in April, so.
Kayla's not here, so you can just say the pressure is now. Kayla anticipated everything for the last four months of the year.
Well, she has, and, 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 and then she, she involves Dustin and Shane and Vern in that too because it's their government, so they turn around and take a look and they, and they point out to them, you know, that you're, you're running over in this, or it doesn't look like you're gonna be able to make it to the end of the year in this. We need to be able to find some money for it, so they turn around and go through here and look and, and give their recommendations to her. She looks it over and puts it in this format then.
Pretty simple stuff. This is straightforward.
Yeah. Some of the other stuff is, is we're still struggling a bit with pay comm. Jill and Kayla have been working tons of hours to try to get everything squared away and checked and checked and double-checked. There's still things that are being held up and our project manager went on maternity leave yesterday, so. It's, uh, it's a trying time with Jill and Kayla right now, so they're doing their best and, uh, everybody's getting paid, uh, everything is being done the way that it's supposed to. But they're having to put a whole bunch of extra effort into it to make sure that they can check everything so that it's done correctly. Starting this month, Dustin took over managing the street department from Shane. And this is his last year. He's retiring at the end of this year. He's still managing the electric department and, uh, I've asked him to get involved with updating the G I S stuff this last year that he's here so that when he leaves, we have a good representation of what's actually out in the field. Also, he's gonna have to spend a lot of time with the company that we hired out of, off the east coast to be able to get us MISO compliant. So they're gonna start picking his brain and coming to town and talking to him and stuff. So he's gonna be doing that most of the year. And Dustin has stepped up, and he's gonna lead the parks, the, the streets and the water department. And I like his new plan of all of them working together and less, less in departments and more as a group to be able to tackle large projects and get things done, uh, with more manpower to be able to get patches done in the streets or if we have to tackle the cemeteries and get those done for a certain day. Send everybody over there and get that done. We could do that, so. It seems like the staff has embraced that, so, uh, and they've embraced him, so, uh, I think that was a smart move on my part.
Dustin's just being embraced everywhere. He's been embraced everywhere.
He has.
Constant embrace.
Yeah.
Congratulations, Dustin.
Yeah, fill the love because it won't last long, buddy.
I got two notifications this week, uh, one for the grant for knocking the buildings down that they expect any day now for that to be transferred into our account. And the same thing with the money for the, uh, economic development plan, that that one is being approved too. So that's good news that more grant money's coming in for us. We are going to put, uh, gas, uh, backup generator at the ground storage or at the elevated tank so that we don't lose any electricity on that stuff in the future. That was in the budget. We looked at doing it out at the ground storage tank. That's a lot more extensive and a lot bigger generator, and that is more than what we had in the budget. So we will not be doing that till the next, hopefully fiscal year, we'll be able to earmark, uh, some of the, uh, ARPA funds to be able to take care of that. They still owe us the overlay of Gordon Drive. There's gonna be striping done with that. But the M F T work that we're going to do this next year is gonna be mostly patches, kind of like what you've seen over on Plummer and, and Tarmigan and at the entrance to the Willows where we, we cut out the concrete or the asphalt, replace it with rock and then pour concrete over the top of it and do as many of those as we can to stabilize the existing roads. And then if we get more money in the future, to be able to come in and put a nice wearing surface over the top of it. But from what we've seen at the entrance to the Willows and over on Tarmigan, the asphalt and the concrete are working so well together. I think that's gonna give us a lot more time before we have to put that new wearing surface over the top of it. It might look like patchwork, but it rides a lot smoother and it's holding up. So if that gives us a chance to get into the subdivisions and start fixing some of the side rows in those subdivisions, it'll be well worth it. Police department, they got their two new officers are at the academy. They're employees of ours now. Yeah. And then, uh, we have two dispatchers that are going through training, so there's a lot going on over on the police side.
Any awards for the police officers tonight?
Fern's not here, so. He's out trying to find one.
Oh, okay. If he comes running in, we know that that's.
I got it, I got it. Let's see, what else? I think that's it.
That's a lot.
Well, there's always a lot going on. I don't always fill you guys in on where everything's at. But, uh, there is always a lot going on.
Wow, thank you. If that's it, is that, or can you think of something else, something else?
If you guys can think of something else you wanna ask me about.
Thanks, Pat.
Yeah.
Next is public properties, and I hear Dustin was at the meeting and he can help us out.
Uh, to the items that we talked about were the parking lot and bike trail, and you guys already had the discussion with Jim tonight. So I went and Jeff last night and talked about some of the plans, and then as of this morning, it changed. So you guys got the updated version today compared to last night's meeting. So, um, we also are working on a couple of baseball fields at West Park that we hope to be, have open April first for baseball games and practice. Need to add some dirt leveled out and add the bases and we're good to go. So just a little bit of work left. And then, um, Pat just approved, uh, with some ARPA funds to, uh, Heathcliff concession stand at the football and soccer. So we should have bathrooms for the playground and have that up and going pretty soon. Um, I was told about a week and a half from now we'll start the birds up here. Last night, Merritt maybe will fill us in more on this, but Christmas on the square was a, it was really good. We had two hundred-plus guests. And Lisa said that you guys are gonna start planning earlier to make it bigger for next year.
Yes, we think Christmas on the square was a hit. We're welcoming any input, and Kristen was a big part of that, and Sarah was a big part of that, so I thought it went very well.
It was very nice.
We're gonna have a whole Christmas sled of, of deer next year. Unless.
Sled of deer.
Said that the life of the park was very successful, uh, even though they had a couple of days there that it was too cold to run in, which was their best day usually for the year, but they still had one of their best years, so. And the D A R memorial is finished until spring. They finished the little landscaping. We have a bench out there for them, and then they're gonna add some more, uh, plants here in the spring. And we just started construction today on the, I think Dale's part of this, the library that, the, the book that you can go through, the market. So like they got six of those stands up. It was seventeen, I believe.
Oh, that's cool.
That's awesome.
Parks department's working hard on that, and they started zip, so hopefully by the end of next week, we should have all that done.
Kazibo.
Not yet. And that's about it for the meeting most nights.
Look at Dusty's walking away. You don't, you don't watch his ass, right?
I'm glad you mentioned the gazebo because as we get ready for doing the, a new budget for twenty twenty-three, it'd be nice to know if, if there's some items that each of you would like to see happen here in Chatham. I got a email from Carl, and he would like to have the concession bathrooms slash at the, near the football and soccer fields painted, uh, a red and white type.
Yeah.
Color and stuff like that, so, uh, but if there's other things, like you said, the gazebo, I've had, Dustin is trying to pull together some quotes, uh, for redoing the pickleball courts, the tennis courts and the basketball court. In all of those. In all of those instances, the people that we had talked to recommended removing everything down to dirt and then starting over again and and that's gonna be a huge expense for all that stuff. So.
It's important, but at what point?
Exactly. How much you spend. And I, I didn't know whether it made sense to, like say for instance, where the basketball or the tennis courts are now, the three of those, that maybe we go in and do that type of repair there and then put those back as pickleball courts and then try to plan a tennis court down by the basketball and put tennis courts down there, put a couple of courts down there. And that way you've got what, uh, that would be what, twelve pickleball courts there? One of them could be completely redone and brand new. Then if we could transition in the next year, maybe over to do the other group of them, remove all that, put all that back new and just kinda keep working around the town that way. Think about it and see if you get any feedback from the public and stuff on, on this stuff.
Welcome signs too.
Welcome signs. I have sent the request to the county in both instances to put the welcome to Chatham signs, the one that's on Gordon, we would put on Gordon and the other one we would put on Chatham Road out near Palm Road. I've got a positive response. He's just gotta give me the final okay.
That, that's probably my big two projects would probably be the gazebo and the welcome sign.
And we had, we had those in the budget, so those should be, be taken care of. We gotta decide if we want a gazebo there or where do we want the gazebo? You know, we have a concrete pad there now. Putting the gazebo right near a busy intersection. I don't know if that's the best spot for a gazebo.
Did anybody hang out there? I mean, was anybody?
There was a few weddings that were done there that I know. Uh, I think the homeless guy slept there for a while, but we've cleared out the brush and stuff around it. It's a lot more open, but think about it, i- if, if, if the.
If see, once, once they finish the, the sidewalk.
Yeah.
See where the new flow in the square is, you'll see that there's probably better location and, and perhaps a better.
Yeah.
Use, not necessarily a gazebo or if it's, you know, the, I call it a purla, but the slanted roof, if it's back toward the south.
Yeah, cause there's a big hole there.
Yeah. But if, if in the end you want a gazebo, we can get a gazebo and put it up on that path. That's, that's not a problem. I just wanna make sure that that's what you want.
There's just a lot of space out there. That would be nice to utilize it in some form or fashion because when we were putting Christmas and Chatham together, there was a lot of space out there that would've been perfect if we had a gazebo or we could have used it for something else. And that was the other thing with the other gazebo, the first, last year, we all voted that we couldn't really use it for. Because it just wasn't, it wasn't safe.
It fell down in the.
Yeah. So I think if we, if we have a structure out there somewhere, we can find more use for it if we just know where we're gonna put it.
I agree with watching what the library is doing and how that space is gonna evolve. So we'll just keep an eye on it.
Since that concrete's been put out there.
Yeah.
That's about it.
Alrighty, uh, the utility oversight committee didn't meet. Everybody is happy.
Well, I have a question though. We did get an email, we did get an email at some point in time about if we've made the corrections in the utility handbook. So there were some corrections to be made or something about the utility handbook regarding solar. And they were just made last year. I, I didn't know if they ever got.
Then that metering is what you're, that was, that change was made, wasn't it?
That metering on the village webpage was done.
But not in the handbook.
I'll have to take a look and see what it says in the handbook if it's different. We're probably a couple of weeks away from IMEA giving us what they consider the fair solar credit value. But, uh, I think just on their preliminary estimates, their, people will get the credit of what we pay for the electricity or no, what they pay for the electricity. So it's not really a one to one. It's, we, if we pay eight cents and we sell it for twelve, I think the fair market value when the thing is all done and the one point eight multiplier is low. I can't remember now.
It's lower.
It's lower.
The cost that we get charged to bring it in includes a fixed component and.
Yeah.
The capital and the supply.
It's still a good deal.
Oh, yeah.
For solar, but it's not as good a deal as the one to one.
Well, we had to. We didn't have a choice. We had to make those changes. But yeah, that someone had brought up, they had looked through the book and the book had not been completed. So we just need to make sure that that's done.
But I think we got all of the people that were in line to get their solar and up and going. They all got approved and they're all up and running.
How many was, I mean.
There was, we think thirty some.
Oh, really?
At least.
Oh, wow.
And so what we've decided to do to kinda help us out and help out the electric department and fire department is all of the residences that have solar, we're putting them on, on a map.
Oh, perfect.
So that you can quickly see which houses have solar so that if fire department was coming down your lane and turn around and go, okay, it's midnight, hard to see anything on the roofs. They can look on the map and say, oh, these five houses right here all have solar. So the, 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 the whole idea too is, is for us to be able to take a look and make sure that, uh, that they, uh.
If we have to, if we have to shut a line down for any kind of work that we've shut down, all of it that's going through.
Right.
And then make sure.
Got it.
Solar is set down.
Yeah, solar's not sending it through.
Yeah. And, and we even have one, I think one of all of the solar customers we have, that he installed batteries at his house. So now you have to make sure that the batteries are shut down so you can shut the solar panels down, shut the batteries down and shut the electricity down, so. But.
I think we, I think we're very, we're ahead of most communities on the solar. I think we've worked well with the community on figuring out and making sure that's a, that's a priority of ours to fix. Thank you.
Alrighty, so that does it for new business. And public comments? Nope, hearing none. Uh, there's no reason to go into, oh, the next scheduled, uh, committee of the whole meeting. I think it's, uh, Valentine's Day, February fourteenth. This says January tenth, but I think.
Oh.
February fourteenth.
First mistake of the year.
Well, hey, you made ten days. That's pretty good, Pat.
Yeah, so, uh, we're all gonna break chocolate and wear bread or something. I don't know.
It's the day after, it's the day after my birthday too, so no pressure.
I hate.
That's the next, uh, committee of the whole? We have no reason for a close session, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Alrighty. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned.
Excellent meeting.
Nice and fast.
It's a very good meeting.
I feel very informed now, Pat. You really got me up to speed there. Love it.
Let me stop the camera before I speak.